Good evening and welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of May 11th, 2021. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, everyone. Matt, thank you very much for putting up the agenda there for the folks at home to see what we'll be discussing tonight. I'll quickly run through for those of you to decide how long you want to hang on to watch with us. But it's a fairly lengthy agenda. We are doing our 284 agreement to expend highway funds each year. The town board appropriates funding towards repaving or sealing our roadways at the recommendation of our highway superintendent. And so we have that recommendation and estimates. And so we'll be concluding that agreement this time. There's a resolution to award contract for paving. And we do that each year is go out to public bid for paving projects. And that's the next item. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on the Mosher Farm Land Protection Application. If you've been following along, we have the good fortune of working with Duchess Land Conservancy, Seneck Hudson and Duchess County on a joint effort to permanently protect the Mosher Farm. And there's an update to some of the application materials. And Erin Hoagland from DLC is with us this evening. We have a bit of good news. We are revising our resolution as it relates to community choice aggregation. If you were watching our last meeting, the final bidding produced some very favorable numbers. And so it now looks like the consortium is going to go with 100% New York State Renewable Energy. Number five, a resolution to assign contract is more of a ministerial thing. We have a water department operator and there's been a change in assignment there. And so we're going to tackle that this evening. The county has a million dollars that is appropriating towards what they call municipal innovation grants for local municipalities, and they are focusing on a couple of areas. And so we are going to entertain and hopefully decide to make an application for grant funding. It's been very useful to us over the past several years. And it's been sort of the seed money to get a lot of important projects started. We are also going to entertain a resolution to authorize an application for fast charging stations, both here at Town Hall and at Village Hall, because there now appears to be funding available for the entire construction of these projects through New York State DEC and our utilities. And that's what we have for tonight's agenda. And Matt, if you would, it's the first meeting of the month. And so as always, we give you a brief update of the funds available. The time period is April 1 through April 30. And we started the month with an opening balance of 8,361,000 and change. We had receipts of 591,000, dispersments of 689,000 for an ending balance of $8,263,222. There are just a few budget adjustments proposed by our bookkeeper Anne. And you have in your packets the variance reports for that time period as well. We are starting to get a sense of what the revenues will look like for 2021 with the completion of the first quarter. And we'll have a better sense towards the end of the summer. But we're hopeful that mortgage revenues and will remain high and that sales tax will recover. It seems to be a bit hit or miss with sales tax revenue for me. Okay, are there any questions about either the supervisor's report or budget adjustments? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to accept the supervisor's report. Thank you very much, Bill, as they are second.
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 Thank you, Bill Hamel. All in favor, Christine Kane.
Aye.
Jacob Testa.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Deanna, would you be kind enough to give the folks at home the clerk's report, please?
Hey, the town clerk's report for the period of April 1st, 2021 to April 30th, 2021, total shares remitted to the supervisor, $5,121.50, of which $3,772 was money collected for garbage at the recycling center. Amount paid to New York State Ag and Markets for the spay neuter program, $66. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $22.50. Total state, county and local revenues, $5,210. And April 2021 vouchers, I certify that vouchers numbered 27617 and 27716 processed in the month of April 2021 are an accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. Is there a motion to accept the town clerk's report?
So moved.
Thank you, Christine. Second?
Second.
All in favor, Jacob?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, announcements, just a few announcements. Excuse me, we're here in May and just to let you know that there will be a Memorial Day celebration put on by the Department of Veteran Services, Duchess County. Again, they'll be doing their drive-through, if you will, celebration. They'll be going from town to town. We'll put up information about the specific timeframes when they'll be in Red Hook on our website. But that is how the celebration will take place this year. Unfortunately, we won't have a parade again, but hopefully 2022. All right, another announcement, COVID update. Don't have a lot of statistics for you tonight. Suffice it to say that the positivity rate, both in New York State and within our region, is approximately 2%. So that's a good sign coming down. Obviously, you all know by now that the availability for vaccines has increased dramatically. And a recent update is that Pfizer has been approved for emergency use vaccination for ages 12 to 15. That is to start tomorrow. As a matter of fact, after a trial with 1,100 applicants, if you will, and it had 100% efficacy. There wasn't one single case of a teenager contracting COVID in this trial. And that compares to 1.6% for those who did not get vaccinated. The dosage is the same, two shots, 21 days apart. Indications are the side effects are the same as well. Half of the teenagers, excuse me, reporting having chills and headaches and about three quarters having pain at the injection site. The same locations, pharmacies, local pharmacies are now stocking up on Pfizer vaccines. So they are already working on the 5 to 12 age group. Right now, with the addition of 12 to 15, that represents an increase now to 87% of the US population is now eligible for the vaccination. And the more that I take the vaccine, the closer and quicker we get to herd immunity, as you all know. Okay, next slide, if you will. Just a note from the assessor's office. If you have a parcel with a house on it in the town of Red Hook, then no doubt you've received a letter from Duchess County Real Property that to adjust for increases in property values, the assessor's office has increased all of those properties by 4%. Now your particular property, if it had something in addition to that, a pool is added or the house is expanded, you might see an additional increase. It doesn't mean that your taxes necessarily will be going up. It just means that the value of residential properties has increased. And I'm sure if you've been following along to what's happening to sales in the Hudson Valley, 4% seems to be, you know, quite modest of an increase. These changes are made so that we still fall within the margin of error within having an equalization rate of 100%. It comes from reports that are generated from New York State that tell us how the assessment rules vary from actual market sales. So again, if you have any questions, please feel free to call our assessor, Cheryl Kozluga, 7584604, or email at assessor@redhook.org. So just everyone knows that all property owners with houses on them receive that 4% increase. Okay, next slide. The other thing we wanted to let you know and we'll cover, and I mentioned earlier, is the change in the community choice aggregation. If you have any questions, many of you participated in the info sessions previously when this program was first launched in January of 2020. But there will be another info session. There was one just the other day, another one coming up June 1st at 7:00 PM. It's a Zoom link and it's on our website. Okay, any other announcements that anyone has? Okay, very good. We don't have any public comments. So why don't we launch right into our first item on the agenda, which is to approve an amended agreement for 2021 highway expenditures. And to, just for the folks at home, it'd probably be good to just mention again, roads that will be worked on during this season. They include Albee Road, Elm Street, Beach Street, Chestnut Street, Fur Street and Dogwood, as well as Gusky, Roca Bee, Blue Echo and Willard. And so we have a resolution number 27, which outlines the work that's being conducted on those roadways, along with estimates prepared by our highway superintendent, Teresa Burke. And are there any questions? Okay, if not, I would-
Matt, can you just roll down the resolution again?
In the agreement part, there we go, Matt, page 2. That's perfect, yeah. So in some cases, it'll be new asphalt and all those roads that I listed in the London Avenue subdivision, chip ceiling of Gusky and Bud's, sorry, Gusky Road to Bud's Corners and chip seal of Roca Bee, Blue Echo and Willard will have new asphalt placed on it. And so this is a resolution for $305,800 worth of paving work and general repairs of $50,000 as well. It's resolution number 27 and I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, Bill O'Neil?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Okay, very good. All right, we have in addition, if we could go to our next resolution, that's 28, dated May 11th, and it is the culmination of a public bid to conduct those paving works on the London Avenue roadways. And the results are included in your packet. And so the resolution awards the Calanand Industry as the lowest responsible bid in the amount of $65.65 per ton. Any questions? I think you have the backup bidding documents as well. Okay, if not, I so move resolution number 28. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill O'Neil. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, Matt, moving right along. We've got resolution number 29, which relates to establishing a date for a public hearing on the aforementioned purchase of developments, development rights project at the Brittany Hollow Farm. We refer to it as the Mosher Farm because the family farm has been in existence for a while now under the town CPF program. And joining us tonight, as I mentioned, is Erin Hoagland from Duchess Land Conservancy. And she is going to show us a nice map. Matt, could we focus on the map for a second for this project for the folks at home? There you go.
I think if we could scroll down, this is a great map of the agricultural soils, but the next map. Great, thanks. Well, thanks for having us back. We were presenting about a year ago, a little less than a year ago, on the original request for the purchase of development rights on this property. And so the map shown here is a site plan map that has been a bit further fleshed out since a year ago. These are kind of broken up into different use areas among the three tax parcels that make up the subject property. There is, of course, the five acres to the north. That is the pick your own flower operation that's not part of the application. But the area shown in bright red there around the existing structures is a farmstead area where most of the future structures will be located in the future. And that has been reconfigured a little bit based on some on-the-ground site planning visits to exclude some areas that were a bit steeper and rocky and pull in some more usable, buildable areas for future use. And then we've also added in light blue, three resource protection areas. There's one kind of right coming off of Route 9 there on the east that serves as a buffer to that stream that runs through the woods. And then the area to the north is meant to protect those woodlands, which you, if you look closely, you can see there's a drainage that runs through there to the wetland offsite. And then there's a very small sliver on the southwestern corner that's just meant to pull in that area that's mapped as DEC Wetland. In addition to that, we have a limited agriculture area that is right between the resource protection area on the east around the stream, between that resource protection area and Route 9, shown in green. And that encompasses a wetland area. And then lastly, out on those two wooded islands, so to speak, are what have been designated as tent site areas, tent rental sites. And the purpose of those is to allow a little bit of flexibility for the Moschers to rent those out as a commercial campsite. Many of you probably know there are now a few of these, especially in our area, some called Tenter and Hip Camp. And we just wanted to make sure that that right was included to allow a bit of flexibility for other income for a future farmer. And then in addition to this updated site plan, really, the bulk of the request is that there has been a significant change in the budget. And the reason we have come back is to request increased funding. I don't know if you, do you have the budget in this packet?
We do have a financial worksheet.
Great. So the updated request is due to a change in the appraised value. Our preliminary appraisal was done back in 2019 in order to, you know, basically come up with a budget to approach funders. And in that time, as we all know, the real estate market has drastically changed. And so our updated appraisal, which we do as a customary part of these projects prior to closing, came back quite a bit higher at $329,863 for the 59.975 acres. And so we are asking if the town would be willing to increase their contribution by $22,113. So the original ask was a total of $94,675. And that request has increased to $116,788. And that would all go, of course, toward the purchase price. And the transaction costs have remained the same at $23,800. Are there any questions about that?
So Erin, just, I'm at my trusty dusty calculator here. So the percentage would be somewhere around 30% that the town would contribute towards the overall project cost?
Correct.
On Route 9, okay. And then the county-
If I could just note that we did, can I just note as you're looking at that, that we did look at the schedule to make sure that the town was only contributing to the portion of the that was in, within the town, that there were other funders who are contributing to the cost of the Rhinebeck property.
Right. And Chris, you're in and out and a little bit in and out. But I think what you were saying is that we're contributing towards the Red Hook portion of the farm, which crosses over into Rhinebeck as well. And other funders are contributing towards the Rhinebeck portion, yeah. Okay, well, considering how important this is. And for the folks at home, this is our southern gateway. So as you're driving, actually, you're in Rhinebeck and you're looking up north on the left-hand side or western side of Route 9, you'll see those beautiful open fields, some of which belong to this farm, this property, and has some terrific soils on it as well. I think that was included in one of the maps earlier. So are there any-
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions, actually. I didn't see anything on the map indicating the location of the old Hucklebush Rail Trail, which I, or railroad bed, which I thought was either on or very close to this prop.
Yeah, I do remember looking at that early on and, you know, before we were applying to funding partners. And it actually runs, I think it wouldn't be shown in the extent of this map, but it does run off the property to the south. And then I think it does wrap around to the north on that western side, if I remember correctly.
Matt, can you, can you show the map again, Matt? Thanks.
Yeah, so I think if my memory serves me, you know, the extent of this map, it wouldn't be shown on, but it does come, I think, kind of sweeps from south to north around that western side of the property. But I don't believe it bisects it in any way.
So is it on the property, on this property, but not within this purchase of development? Or it's not, it's on the adjacent property?
I believe it's on the adjacent property.
Okay.
Yeah, it definitely doesn't cross the Moschers property.
Okay, and then just to clarify that, even with this type of project, anything that happens within the farm development area or the two camping sites is still subject to town approval and town zoning too? So just to get that clarified.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, any, any development of any kind would be, you know, the easement has its specifications, but it's always ultimately falls to town zoning.
And I have a follow-up question to Christine's. Are both the tent rental sites in the town of Red Hook or they in Rhinebeck?
No, so the northern tent rental site, that parcel line that bisects the tent rental site is the town line. So that one straddles and then the southern one is fully within the town of Rhinebeck.
And the other question I have, because I don't have immediate access to our zoning map, but I'm assuming that the entire farm is zoned Agricultural Business District.
I believe it was, maybe I can pull it up quickly.
And it's correct.
I don't think that it, you know, was part of multiple. I think it was all within the ag.
Okay.
The ABA, which I can have a quick look here. ABD, I should say. Yeah, it's all within the Agricultural Business District. Well, the portion that's in Red Hook, of course.
And then do you happen to know, Erin, for the property, the yellow, just south of the water, the wetlands there, the blue islands, is that an existing access already onto Route 9? The, or proposed, under the easement, you know, potentially proposed access outside of the farm development area?
Yeah, so there is a, if you see that white line that kind of snakes along, yeah, right? Yeah, that is, there's another one in the northern resource protection area as well that will be called out in the conservation easement document. But that is a, an already established access. It's an old farm road.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Did I have a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
When the Community Preservation Fund Committee reviewed the application, was it also proposed at that time that these two commercial aspects be included in the proposal, the two tent rentals?
No, that, that came up since we presented to the committee, but I believe they'll be reviewing this again. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but reviewing this again prior to the public hearing on June 8th.
That's right. I reached out to the chair of the committee and sent her the documents and asked her to schedule a follow-up meeting for the period between now and the, and the public hearing date so that they can make a recommendation to you for your review at that time.
But Chris, shouldn't we have that done before we vote on it?
No, you're just setting a public hearing, Bill. I'm asking you to set a public hearing tonight and then the public hearing will be in June, okay?
And we'll have that report from the CPF committee by then?
Right.
Yeah, you need a, you need a recommendation.
Okay.
So that's-
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Erin.
They'll also, because we, because this involves a somewhat larger dollar contribution, we've asked the CPF committee to review that, so.
Just for context on those areas, they, again, like everything else, are specified in the conservation easement. So they have certain limitations, you know, visitors or I guess renters aren't allowed to stay for extended period of time, more than two weeks, and aren't able to drive out their own vehicles out to those sites. They're meant to park within the farmstead area. And then each site is limited to one platform for a tent each. And then each can have one fire pit and one, like, non-permanent composting toilet. And so everything is, all of those details are, would be part of the conservation easement.
Does this idea come from your land conservancy or from the owner of the property? Does this idea come from your land conservancy or from the owner of the property?
It came from the owner and they don't necessarily have any plans themselves to do this. You know, of course, they always could, but we do try to. We pulled language from another farm property that contemplated this idea and just kind of generally for the agricultural easements, we do try to allow flexibility for things like this, just to allow farmers the opportunity to supplement farm income in ways that, you know, aren't intrusive or or having a negative impact on the rest of the agricultural use of the property.
Very good. More questions?
I don't know how firm the locations of the sites are at this point, but it probably would be a good idea to keep one that one that bisects the lines. If you could get that to one side or another, that would probably be good for the owners that if they ever wanted to seek approval, so they didn't have to go to two municipalities.
That is a good point. And bring that up with them.
Well, they could locate it in one municipality or another. I think it's just capturing a non agricultural spot. That's a bit of a rock outcropping there, if I recall that property tree.
I don't think that I don't think it makes much of a difference personally, because if if the expectation is that the parking for those will be on the on the farmstead, that's all in Red Hook. And so that would impact issues related to the planning board and and those kinds of approvals. I I get that. I agree that it should probably be one or the other, but I do think that regardless of where they are, if they're both in Rhinebeck, there's still a piece of this commercial activity that involves the town of Red Hook.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it would be a much similar review, a simpler review process.
Right. Okay, more questions, anyone? All right. So we have resolution number twenty nine, and thank you, Aaron, very much. I imagine we'll see you again if your schedule permits June eighth. Is that does that work for your calendar?
Yes, I will definitely be there. Thanks so much for the opportunity to resubmit.
Okay, well, thank you for all the good work. We wouldn't be able to do these preservation projects without all of the legwork that goes into it and coordinating all the various funders and applications. So. Okay, resolution number twenty nine, calling for a public hearing on the Mosher, AKA Brittany Hollow Farm CPF Preservation Project. And it is scheduled for June eighth at seven thirty five. Town Hall will still be doing Zoom on June eighth. So information on the public hearing will be available on the town's website. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
You very much. Okay. Thanks again, Aaron.
Thank you.
Well, we'll see you soon. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Resolution number thirty involves community choice aggregation. So if you were with us at our last meeting, the thinking by the consortium, the fourteen municipality consortium that is buying the energy supply for residents and small businesses. We thought that the bidding was going to encourage us to have a blend of New York State renewable and national wind. And lo and behold, when final bids were in, there was a very little difference between the New York State renewable and they blend. And so the unanimous consensus was to go with a continuation of one hundred percent New York State renewable energy. In the last contract, it consisted almost primarily of hydro. We'll see what the blend is here for this now three year contract. So for the folks at home, Matt, could we scroll down just a little bit past the resolution? Some of the information that you'll get will be in a presentation that Hudson Valley Community Energy has conducted last week and again at the beginning of June. But if you'd highlight what the contract is for is a three year period for the supply portion of your energy bills through Central Hudson at a fixed rate of point zero six five seven three. Small commercial is slightly higher at point zero seven one one two. Inevitably, the question always comes up, will this be cheaper or will this be more expensive than quote unquote traditional or dirty energy? And we can't answer that question because it's over a three year period and we don't have a crystal ball. I think none of us thought that two things would have occurred in the last contract. One is that energy prices would collapse. And actually, energy futures, the oil futures were negative for the first time in history after the pandemic hit. And and conversely, we never would have imagined that the Central Hudson rate for the month of March would have been fifty five percent higher than the contract that was in place for Red Hook residents. Currently, I think the April comparison for Central Hudson is points point zero seven zero for residential. So at the moment, it's favorable, but again, we don't have a crystal ball. Just for context, for folks at home, the average supply portion of a residential bill typically is somewhere between thirty five and forty five dollars per month. So if you have an average house, then it the the cost varies by a few percent. You're not talking about huge amounts of money. But it does have a tremendous impact on the demand for renewable energy to be created in our country. And as you see now, renewable energy in many cases is cheaper than the alternatives that we were faced with just twenty or thirty years ago. So those are the rates. Again, as a reminder for the folks at home, you're going to receive a letter that gives you this information. You can opt out of the program if you want to, you know, take the variable rate of Central Hudson and, you know, not worry about where the energy is coming from. You can do that at any time during the contract period, the three year period. There's no penalty, there's no fee associated with it. It happens seamlessly and you get the benefits of the group purchasing power that the fourteen municipalities have. So this is a resolution to revise slightly. The last meeting's a resolution. It's resolution number thirty. And it's to ratify the execution of the twenty twenty one CCA electricity supply agreement. And I so moves. There a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a technical change to make here. Chris Shaw, may I impose upon you to do a little bit of the explanation and I can give my vocal cords a little rest?
Well, we received a communication from the Water Department indicating that they had been notified by, I guess, their longtime manager at the company that's been serving them, BRI, that they were, it seems like purchasing this business from BRI with a new business called C three N D. The principal is Fernando Dongo, who again, I believe has been their actual manager for several years. So what we've we've notified the Water Department that they needed to get approval from this board in order to do that. And we've asked them to submit the insurance and other, you know, documents from the from the new vendor. And we've also asked the Water Department to give us a confirmation that they've reviewed this. So we have the recommendation from Hank and and Jerry that they go ahead, that we go ahead and authorize this. We've prepared a resolution that would authorize this. They will need to provide to us before we actually sign this. They will need to provide the required insurance documents to us, the same documents that the prior vendor was required to have. So.
So it's a change in ownership and not a change in management of the operations of the water district for the folks at home.
Well, so I think we've recommended that they plan to do an RFP at the end of the year. So this is a midyear transfer for the remainder of of twenty twenty one.
All right, resolution number thirty one dated May eleventh, authorizing the consent to the assignment of the agreement for professional services water system operator. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. If there's no further discussion, Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. So grants, 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 we can't do a lot of the good work that we do here at the town of Red Hook without searching under every stone for grant funding. Duchess County has released now that there's been support from the federal government for replacement funding. The municipalities have incurred during the pandemic, Duchess County has released again this year, their local funding grant application, which has been coined the municipal investment grant this year, municipal investment grant. There's a million dollars to be spread over applications throughout the county, the twenty two municipalities. And each year they have different focus areas. This year is public facilities and improvements to parks and recreation areas. We know we've done a lot of that in the last couple of years. Purchase of generators for critical infrastructure. It's very timely because our generator is over a generation, pun intended, old. It was nineteen eighty six. And so we had it on our schedule to replace it anyway this year. And general shared services and we are concluding a shared judicial court grant that we received from the county just previously. So those are the three focus areas and we did give some some thought to some of the potential projects. And we also had a request from PACE Land Use to see if we wanted to be a part of their application for streamlining land use processes in a municipality. This is a project that they've previously conducted with other municipalities, Poughkeepsie and the town of Hyde Park. And they sent along some of those examples of the work product. So any any thoughts on the generator issue? One of the ideas in addition to the town hall generator is to apply for a second generator for our warming and cooling station here in the town of Red Hook, which is now the Red Hook Community Center. The Red Hook Community Center also was the site of the Friendship Center, the Office of Aging Friendship Center, where seniors receive their meals during the course of the day. And so not having a generator there makes those services quite vulnerable for that population. And so those, that's the the thinking is that we could apply for two generators and there's a resolution articulating that if the board is so willing to entertain. Thoughts?
Actually, yeah, I'm supportive of this application. I think it makes good sense and is well within the guidelines that they seem to be looking for for the grant this year. And as you said earlier, you know, we the other two areas, we recently got grants for recreational projects, recreational park work, and we've got a consolidation grant previously for the courts. So makes sense to me that we would try for this third category, since we haven't gotten a grant for that in the recent past.
Very good. Anyone else before we entertain this resolution? All right, it's number thirty two dated May eleventh. And Christine Kane, would you like to make the motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Bill O'Neill. With no further discussion, then Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you very much. And so it's to apply for municipal investment grant. I keep saying innovation. In fact, I think we have it carried over the title.
Yeah, probably.
So the county keeps changing the name and they are they're very happy. They can name it whatever they want, as long as they help us out with some of these local projects.
Okay, so do we need to
We could change the resolution accordingly.
Yes.
I was gonna say, yes.
We would make that
investment grant.
Yes, that typo, that would be terrific.
Well, yes, I'm not sure it was a typo. I think it was just not having all the documentation in time to put the resolution together, to be fair, but yes.
And what do we want to say to Pace University? I mean, I saw the final product. I wasn't sure reviewing it that. Well, what are your thoughts? Any any thoughts?
Well, when you when you sent it around earlier, previously, I did, I was unclear whether there was a financial contribution required. So can is there? Can you clarify that?
No, I don't believe there is.
Okay. Well, then, in that case, I see no reason not to participate.
Okay. Others?
I agree.
And then we'll we'll communicate that to Pace and to Duchess County as well. All right, we are moving right along. We are now at a resolution to authorize another grant application for fast charging stations. So Matt, there's our resolution. And I don't know that we were, we were hoping maybe we could get one of the consultants with us this evening, but I don't think that's going to work out. But we do have a memo from Dennis, who chairs our energy committee. Just quickly summarize. Matt, if you want to scroll down to that memo. Essentially. Thanks. Very good. As you know, critical to the transition to electrification of transportation is having the proper infrastructure. Red Hook has led local communities with the grant funded installation of level two chargers. Those are chargers that will fully charge a totally electric vehicle in several hours. Critical also to the infrastructure is the ability for vehicles to be quickly charged. Direct current fast chargers, DCFC is what they refer to for individuals so that they can get on their way and continue on their way, much like you would fill up your gas vehicle at a gas station to continue on a long roadway trip. Having these fast charging stations allows individuals to come to our community, charge up quickly, grab a bite in the village or in the charge up quickly, grab a bite in the village or in the town, and then get on their way. And so New York State, which has been terrific in providing the financial support, has released two and a half million dollars for these purposes through DEC. And Central Hudson, or all utilities, I should say, this is mandated by New York State, is providing an additional support for the construction costs. And so as Dennis outlines here, essentially what you have is a fully funded construction project that also funds out the ongoing expenses for several years and then allows for the potential to bill out for fast charging, much like exists with the fast chargers out in the private sector throughout our country. And so the recommendation is to quickly hop on this unique opportunity and to put two fast chargers in each of parking lots, one in town hall parking lot and the other centrally located in the village parking lot. And the town would apply on behalf of the village who was supportive of the idea. And we would have to work out an agreement, Chris Shaw and the village's attorney would work on some language there. And there's been some, we have some, Matt, if you would scroll down, maybe we can take a look at some of the numbers. So Central Hudson, that's a part of their program, what they're allowing for funding. And then we can continue on that. Okay, yeah, here's, here's a, here's sort of a summary page here. And this is for each location, per location. These are not inexpensive, these fast chargers, because of what they're capable of. And then you combine that with not only the site work and electric work that's necessary, but also the software and the warranty programs. And you can see how they're, they're not inexpensive. But the DEC project, eighty percent combined with construction, that's the utility make-ready figure there, thirty-seven thousand. You get a project total of one forty-nine. The utility provides ninety percent of that, thirty-seven thousand. And so you end up with having, you can scroll down, Matt, to the next page. Having essentially fully paid for projects. This is just a slide that shows that many automakers, if you've been following along with the news, you see that finally a lot of the big three and other automakers are coming along and announcing that many, if not all, their vehicles will be transitioned to electric. And here are some of those commitments by those industry leaders. Matt, next slide, if you would. Okay, and then there's, you know, some estimates of growth in fully electric vehicles and looking at, you know, sequentially, you know, tremendous increase in, in fleet size. Okay, here we go, next slide. Okay, this slide is just to give folks a rough idea. Obviously, the price of electric and gasoline fluctuates. You see here, the slide shows two dollars and fifty cents a gallon for gasoline. And obviously, you know, if you've filled up in the last few days, it's closer to three dollars now. Electric, it says twelve cents a kilowatt. I think we're more like thirteen or fourteen right now in our area residential. So if you were to make those adjustments, you would see that it's approximately twelve cents a mile versus five cents a mile, or in this comparison, ten versus four. One of the great benefits of transitioning to an electric vehicle is just how much money you save over gasoline in a utility area like ours with, with rates like we have here. Maintenance costs, obviously, a lot of these electric vehicles have many fewer parts. They don't need oil changes, so on and so forth. So there are benefits, financial, as well as environmental. Okay, next slide. Okay, level-two versus fast charging, I think I spoke. The ones out here, it could be about twenty-something miles per hour. If you were to use a fast charging, you would get two hundred-plus miles of range in an hour of charging. So you can see just what a benefit that is for the public and for the environment to have that capability. Next slide. Okay, the, these are the systems. There's only a few systems and softwares that are approved for this program. Many of these state and federal pro- programs call for specifications and the vendors need to meet those specifications. This is available for purchase on the state contract that's listed there. And again, if we could go down, if you were to have two, two of these together and only one is in use, you can get an even faster charge from, from the stations. Okay, next slide, Matt. All right, this is a little bit technical, but essentially the grants pay for all of the work, electric, anything associated with installing. And they do have, yeah, limitations. And this is the Central Hudson program here. This is the make-ready or construction costs. All right, next slide. Okay, and there we go, is the cost of two units. And if you can see those figures in the net, there you go. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, good. Utility incentives and then that, there's no, there's no net cost to the municipality, though we do have to lay out the money first, because it's a reimbursable program. When you're awarded, they set the money aside for you. So there's, there's no risk to that. Next slide, Matt. Okay, you want to pass that slide, if you would? That's only one unit. There's, there's the grant program through DEC, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per site available. So that would be for the town hall and then another two hundred and fifty thousand maximum for the village hall. And the match shows the twenty percent match, but the utility program can be used and is used as the match. Okay, two-year contract period, so you must keep the charging stations there for at least two years. Okay. All right, next slide. Okay, that's the utility again, what they cover, ninety percent of the make-ready and some of the eligible costs and ineligible costs. All right, next slide. Central Hudson demand charges and rebates. So when you have a, a high demand, the utilities are famous for putting a demand charge on there. And that can sometimes be a deterrent for having anything in any type of application such as this, or even commercial properties. There's a very large fee that is exercised on the user by the utility. This grant program anticipates that and funds for that, provides enough funds for that. Next slide. Okay, there's a chart there, thinking ahead. All right, and it kind of shows over the period, it's a little hard to see, but it shows how the leftover funds after the two-year period in construction will help support some of the you know, negative impacts from having the charging stations without actually levying a fee for it. But then when you do start doing that, you'll start generating quite a bit of revenue. Once those excess funds are exhausted, you can see, based upon some estimate, estimates there, there'll be a benefit to the town for providing this service. And if you've been to one of these fast chargers, generally speaking, the arrangements that the companies make allow for them to generate some revenue and the property owner who hosts them to share in that revenue stream. So that's true of all the developers out there. Okay, next slide, Matt. I think we're almost finished here. Okay, and that's the DC Office of Climate Change, and that's the information. Folks want to read up more about it. And we have the particular model, information about that as well. It's very exciting. Any questions, folks?
Just want to make sure, because I had to read Dennis's memo a few times, the last sentence. We're talking about a total of four chargers, two in each location, because it's not written in the clearest way. And in the interest of plain language and clear language in our resolution, I want to make sure we say we recommend four portals, two in the town and two in the village. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's right. Two of those portals. What's different about the fast chargers is you don't have, you don't have two extensions per, per portal. You only have one with a fast charger. So you have those two posts that you see there, two, two stations, if you will. So, yes, so you'd be having two in each location, town and village.
Which means, so, which means just that you'd be charging max four cars at a time as opposed to the current ones where you could charge eight cars at a time.
Exactly right.
Right. And these chargers would charge, would work with multiple types of cars.
That's right.
Okay.
Exactly. These are not, these are not-
These are not Tesla chargers.
These are not. Okay, very good. Resolution number, are we on thirty-three, Deanna? Let's say we are. Thirty-three.
Yes.
Thank you. Dated May eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, we need to fill in the estimated project cost of. I realize that's not-
That's the total cost, wasn't it, one seventy-nine?
Total cost for each one of those. Bear with me for a second while I pull it off of the-
And while you're looking for that, per Bill's question, do you want to add? Because at the beginning, we say, an application for fast electric vehicle charging stations to be located at the town and village hall parking lots, do we want to say two pairs of stations?
Sure.
Or something to that effect?
Okay, so max for two pairs.
Is that what, is that the best way to describe it?
That's fine. DCFC charging stations. Or eight pairs, each location, yeah, a pair of DC or a pair of fast-
Fast electrical charging stations.
To be located at each, how about that? Would that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, each of the, all right, and so we have an estimate of a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for each pair. I would say that we should add to that, add a little buffer, since it's all covered by the grant funding. It's a huge amount of money. I would say three hundred and seventy thousand dollars would have a, a five percent buffer. Almost a ten percent buffer. And would be fully funded for the four of them. Okay, I assume move. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. All right, second by Christine. All in favor? Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Did I miss anybody?
I'm an aye.
What's that?
I'm an aye.
I lost Bill. I forgot you.
I'm still here.
You're close. You're, 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 you're still with us. Okay. And for the folks at home, there will be, the energy committee's working on an education campaign about electric vehicles for the folks at home, so that you can become more acquainted with them. I know many of you want to do all that you can to reduce emissions. And the analysis that's come out of the committee work is that by switching to fully electric vehicles, on average, and of course, nobody is the average, but on average, you can reduce household emissions by thirty-two percent just by making that simple change. And as you know, most of the New York grid is much cleaner than it was twenty or thirty years ago. No small part because of the kinds of actions that we're taking here with CCA and community solar and so on and so forth. So. Okay, very good. I don't have any correspondence to share with you tonight. We do need to go into an attorney-client session. We're gonna do that by audio. And then we are going to discuss matters under litigation. And I would like to thank you all for joining us this evening. Our next regularly scheduled town board meeting is for May twenty-sixth at seven-thirty. And for town board members, we are going to mute our audio and turn off our video and go to a phone conference. And for the folks at home, if you're not hanging on, thank you very much for joining us. Stay safe, stay healthy. And let's get through this. Okay. A motion to go into attorney-client. Christine, second?
Second.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Okay. Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
To you, Bill.
We are.
Things all here. Okay, very good. Folks, we're back. We just passed a motion to exit attorney-client. And we continue with the town board meeting of May eleventh. At this time, I would like to make two motions. The first is to engage the firm of Drake and Low to represent the town in an Article seventy-eight proceeding filed by the developers of the preserve that lakes kill. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Bill O'Neill. All in favor? Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Also, at this time, I would like to set a special meeting for Thursday, May twentieth, at seven-thirty PM. The agenda items to include discussion, resolution for two easements related to the project known as Preserve at Lakes Kill. Is there a motion to, excuse me, set the special town board meeting? A second for that?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Folks, this concludes tonight's town board meeting. Thank you again for joining us. Please stay safe and healthy. Please stay safe and healthy.